Good evening. I am Fenobia Dallas, the Chair of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Public comments are permitted during the designated time on the agenda. This allows the public to speak to the Planning Commission about issues of general concern in the community. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the staff member for the record. Speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general or specific questions, and those questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the Commission. The public hearing is to address the Commission with regard to the subject of the relevant hearing and not to speak on other topics. When the petition, special land use, or site plan approval request in which you are interested is called, please be prepared to speak. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the staff member for the record. The applicant whose application is the subject of the public hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. After the appellant's presentation, others may comment. Again, both speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole and not to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the public hearing will be limited to three minutes. Speakers may only speak once on that public hearing. This meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions, special land uses, or site plans made by the Planning Commission are then forwarded to city council for disposition. Are there any questions? Saying none, Staff Zimmerman, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Brayley, Commissioner Zwarko, Commissioner Dallas.
Here.
Commissioner Hanley.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Here, present.
Commissioner Nash.
Present.
Commissioner Osash. Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is our approval of minutes from March 22, 2022. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll move, Moore.
Second, Nash.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from March 22, 2022. Any questions? All in favor? Repose? Thank you. The minutes have been approved. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda as published. Is there a motion?
I'll move, Moore.
Second, Nash.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the public comment. Again, this is the time for public comments, which allows the public to speak to Planning Commission about issues of general concern in the community. This is not the public hearing component of the meeting. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the Commission. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the Commission? Is there anyone here who wishes to address the Planning Commission? Is there anyone here who wishes to address the Planning Commission? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is new business. The first item is a public hearing, and we now open the public hearing for the item listed on the agenda. Again, remember, the public hearing is to address the Commission with regard to the subject of the relevant hearing and not to speak on other topics. The applicant whose application is the subject of the public hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. After the appellant's presentation, others may comment. This public hearing is for case J 22-130, special use, excuse me, site plan review and special use permit for an eight-unit apartment building at 2737 Davenport Avenue. Is the applicant or a representative present? Please state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Okay, good evening. My name is John Maury with DN M Site Surveying and Engineering here in Saginaw. I'm representing PTL Management Group, who has purchased 2737 Davenport Avenue, and what we are attempting to do with this special use permit is, the property is listed in RL1, which is a restricted office use. We have a proposed eight-unit apartment building planned. There's an existing building on the site, a 3,000-square-foot building. The plan is for eight units, 400 square-foot efficiency apartments in this building. The building is sitting, oh, 500 feet off of Bay Road. This building has had multiple uses through the years. It is next to the Housing Commission High Rise Tower on Davenport. PTL Management, Alex Hadass is not here today. He's been ill. He sent me this small letter, just kind of stating what PTL Management Group does. They own rental properties in the city of Saginaw. Most of their properties are located on State Street and the Woodbridge Corridor, and their business model is to have some affordable housing, affordable rents, basically between $600 and $800 a month. These are one-bedroom efficiency apartments with onsite laundry. The existing building itself right now has an existing parking lot, and the site plan indicates that we're going to basically cut 30 feet of the parking lot off to get to the setback and just add it to the back of the existing parking lot that exists right now. We scaled this back from what they have proposed, and I'll be in front of you guys later, with actually two more buildings with these 500 to 600 square-foot efficiency apartments. The reason and what I'm going to end up doing is taking that whole parking lot that we're going to utilize for the Phase One development, and we're going to remove all that, and that's going to be the detention for when I come back in front of you, Phase Two. What we wanted to do was get Phase One going so that they could get in there and start the construction of the interior of this building and get that up and running first. The reason that we're scaling this back right now is because right now they are in the process of talking with Advanced Auto about purchasing some more property in the back, and basically my whole site plan at that point will change. The buildings will flip around, and so I didn't want to engineer everything, have them buy some additional property and have them waste their time, basically. So that is the proposed special use right now, the existing building next to the High Rise. The Housing Commission's High Rise, and based on the parking requirements, it's two spaces per unit, so there's 16 spaces shown with a dumpster. And so that's, right now, I'm working with the Engineering Department. The Engineering Department's requirement is for the pipe to be three and a half feet deep. It's an existing structure right now, an existing storm sewer, and I'm dealing, I'm working with Travis right now to see if I can get a waiver on that until Phase Two comes along. So other than that, that's what we're asking for, special use permit for this restricted office zoning. Has anybody got any questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this case? Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Chair, propose to close the public hearing.
Second?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Commissioner, is there a motion to approve case J 22-0130, site plan review and special use permit for an eight-unit apartment building at 2737 Davenport Avenue, pending review and approval by the City of Saginaw Engineering Department?
I'll move, Moore.
Second, Jones.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the case. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Do you have a question of this gentleman?
Of this gentleman.
We need to have a motion to go out of regular order of business. Is there a motion?
I'll move, Moore.
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded to go out of the regular order of business. Madam Mayor, you may ask your question.
You've got to vote on the motion.
I'm sorry.
You've got to vote on the motion.
I'm sorry, didn't vote on the motion. Is all in favor of that motion to go out of the regular order of business? Please state your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Thank you.
I just have a couple quick questions. Okay, so you're going to start with one plan, but we'll end up with some more plans as you go on to the projects.
Yeah, I probably shouldn't even have brought that up.
Ooh, you sure shouldn't, because I just got totally confused. Okay, so you're going to start off with eight units.
Correct.
Let me ask you this. What is going to be the total? Do they know, are they going to have 16 units, 24 units, or, you know, do they have a total when it's all said and done? How many units?
I have 10 units. I have nine units, so I'll have basically another 20 units.
Okay, so we're saying 28. And these are all going to be one-bedroom efficiencies?
Correct.
Okay. And you said rent was, again, it was like a two-figure range?
Yeah, between 600 and 800.
Now, I know that you don't know all of this yet, but I'm asking it anyways. So does that include everything, consumers and stuff, or is that separate? Utilities?
I don't know that.
That's okay. That's okay. When I said it, I thought about it. Okay. So, okay, that's what I needed. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Could I ask the staff a question?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Nash.
Okay. Has everybody been contacted within 500, 300 feet?
Yes.
Any comments out from them?
No.
Just comment to the architect or the engineer. This is the old veterinary building, right?
Correct.
Property. Wasn't that condemned?
It was. What they had done, they had tore out a bearing wall.
Stress-bearing wall.
In the building.
Yeah.
And so the Austin architects is working to reestablish and working with the Building Department, the Building Inspector, to rebuild that bearing wall. That's why it got condemned.
Condemned, yeah.
And so, yeah, that is being addressed with the Building Department, and I don't think that they have submitted building plans yet.
Yeah, I just know that it was condemned.
So you're going to use the existing building?
Correct.
Which used to be the veterinary hospital?
Correct.
Okay.
And it was a dentist office before that.
Correct, yeah.
So I got another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So when is the operation going to start? When are you going to break ground or start renovating?
Well, now with the special use permit, they'll be able to start working on the building under their planned use and start creating these apartments within that building. So I'm assuming that they'll get going here as soon as possible now.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have a quick question. Maybe you can answer this, John, but management of the facility, where is that going to be located?
This PTL Management Group, they're actually based in Flint on Miller Road.
On-site? Is somebody going to be there on-site?
I don't believe so.
I guess I got another question.
Yes, ma'am.
You're right next to a senior citizen center. So that was a good question. That really was a good question, because now it sparks a, what's the criteria? Is this for seniors? Is it for veterans? Is it for what? Or you don't, or he doesn't, he hasn't decided on what his criteria was going to be?
I don't know the answer to that. It's just affordable housing.
Okay, okay. No problem.
So there won't be an onsite manager for the first eight units? Will there be eventually an onsite manager as you expand the number of units?
I don't have a designated office on any of these plans. I have not, I do not have the architectural plans for the other two buildings, but I can definitely ask him.
Well, I don't know about the other commissioners, but that's a concern. Any other questions from commissioners? All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to return to the regular order of business?
I'll move, Moore.
Second, Nash.
It's been moved and seconded to return to the regular order of business. All in favor, please state your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Thank you. We've returned to our regular order of business. Commissioners, are there any further questions about this particular case? Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Dallas.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanley.
Nay.
Commissioner Jones.
Nay.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Nash.
Aye.
Motion was approved.
The next item on the agenda is case J 22.
Oh! Do you need to give a reason?
Yes.
Because it was approved?
Approved.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is case J 22-0131, for informational purposes only. This is a project for the construction of a new Hanley Elementary School building. The site plan report, or excuse me, yes, the site plan report is being presented to the Planning Commission for informational purposes only. No action is required by the Planning Commission.
I do not have anything to report other than what you see here.
Thank you. Any comments from the Commission on this? Yes, ma'am.
I need to know that this, okay, I understand that they're building a high school, so we're going to make sure that they follow all of the plans like everybody else.
This is...
That's what I'm saying.
It's a State of Michigan issue, so it doesn't really come under our purview.
It doesn't, yeah.
The only oversight that we have as a municipality is where they tie into municipal services.
Yep.
Yes, all, well, the state controls the rest of it.
Oh, you know, I'm asking.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Okay. No, that's mine. That's mine. Thank you for the clarification. Because it came in front of us, I assumed.
Just for informational purposes.
And it's just for information, so I'm good.
Yep. And just an added note, they've already dug the, whatever drainage they need to dig, they've been doing that over the last three or four months, because I live in that part of the city, and I drive by it every day, and so it's pretty much a done deal, I guess.
I think my wife is at the groundbreaking. After it was halfway started, that's another story.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the master plan status update.
She got the big one, too.
I got the big one, too.
Where is that? The old one?
So, good evening, Commissioners. Just, I'm Cindy Todd with Spicer Group. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. You have, we provided a draft of the master plan for everyone to review. What we didn't put in were the appendix, and the appendix were about 500-plus pages. We are more than happy to put that in, because this was a draft. To put that in, if you would want, and I can update your, I can update your book so it's big like this one, sorry, but because it was a draft, we had just provided the upfront information. And in the draft, and in the appendix, and I'm just going to talk to you just because of the thickness of it, in the appendix, it had the housing study, it had all of the survey information, all the survey data, it had all the tabulations, it had the transportation study, so it made it a very large document. And then in the report itself, in the draft, we made all of the plans eight and a half by 11, so they fit nicely into the report, but then in the back, they're 11 by 17, so they're easier. So if you, we reference them in the document, so if you want to see them in larger scale, they're in the back. So I'd be more than happy to give you guys the whole, the whole draft, I mean, the whole with the appendix, if you would like. It was because we were in the process of just reviewing the upfront information, that was why, that was why you have that. So please let me know if that was, if that would be helpful. But you have had the draft probably for a handful of days, and I just really wanted to just talk through it. This is our draft that we've been updated. We've been working, as you know, with the city for a few years on working with the draft. Everything that's in this document, our findings that we've had over the last, from the old, from the past master plan all the way up to date, any findings, any reports that we've had. We've had the survey that was out, that was part of the findings as we put into the report. We had our stakeholder meetings with our multiple, we had individual stakeholder meetings. We had stakeholder meetings with the larger group, I believe some of the Planning Commission, we guys ran it, were part of that. And so all of those findings were what helped us produce this document, our goals and objectives and our proposed land use plan. We've been working with staff on developing those, and I believe you've seen those over the last couple of meetings, and we've received your comments back. Those are also in the document. I have received some comments back, oops, excuse me, I received some comments back just to date, which are text, are some text comments and some updates that we will need to do. The goal of this evening is to, if you have any other questions, if you have any questions, I will go through this however you would like me to go through it. You can provide more comments to us today, we can, as it goes on. The text updates, we can do, the idea is, is that you would, if it's, if it's doable and the Commission would like, we can, if you wanted to adopt it as a draft today, it could then go to the council in their May meeting, and then they would be able, and then they would be able to adopt it, and we could have put it out for the 63-day public review. Prior to that 63-day public review, comments such as our, these text comments, we can update any other comments that you would provide to us, we could update in the document if that's what the Commission would like. It's, it would be whatever works best for the Commission, and then it would be out for the 63-day review, and then it would come back, and then the plant, the Commission would have a public hearing, and then at that time, which would be in August, and you would be able to, we would, any other comments that we would have, we would gather, have the public come, have a public hearing, and then from there, the Commission would be able to adopt the master plan with additions and updates. That's just kind of my synopsis in a real quick nutshell. But that was, that was a thought process, but I, it was really whatever, you know, the Commission is comfortable with doing, just let us, just let us know, and any questions that you have, that's where we're at. And I greatly appreciate your time.
Right, thank you. Well, a couple of things I do have. First of all, yes, I did print the entire draft and all the appendices, and I'm concerned about some of the appendices that are included in the master plan.
Okay.
This is a document that should be a manageable document. We have a housing study that was done in 2020 as one of the appendices. That should actually be pulled out as a separate report. We also have, in fact, we can, the only thing we really need in the master plan from that housing study is a four-page executive summary. That's literally all we need in the master plan. That would make this plan a lot more manageable for people who are looking at it from different areas, whether they're from the business world or from residents. The other, the other two, the transportation study and the parking study, again, my sense is that they can be distilled to one or two pages in terms of an executive summary, and those reports can be placed separately on these planning and zoning websites for people who want to look at them in greater detail. Again, the goal of the master plan is to have a manageable plan that anyone can read, look at our objectives, our goals, and be able to see what we're trying to do in the city. And if they have to go and deal with a 583-page plan, they're not going to look at it, and I hate to be that way, but I'm very conscientious of making sure that this document becomes one that is a used tool for planning for the city's growth.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if any of the commissioners are thinking about that, but that's the first thing I thought of some of these, because again, the housing study is a great study, but I think that having it as a separate document away from the master plan gives people a chance to look at it as a separate document on its own.
As its own.
A lot of people who put some effort, a lot of effort and time into this, this is a great document, and I appreciate it, but I think to hide it in the master plan does them a disservice.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I was a part of all three of those plans that was paid for by the State of Michigan?
Mm-hmm.
They're not just hidden in the master plan, they're also listed elsewhere.
Okay.
So if you feel as though you think there should just be a summary, that's fine, but we have these plans for other reasons.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I'm just saying that I think that if they're in the master plan, people may not get to them because they're larger.
Right, right, but I'm just making sure that everyone understands that it's not just in the master plan, that we do have it on our website, because there was other departments that were working on this outside of the master plan.
Great. So I think if we can get just like executive summaries of those, of those appendices, and again, have a notation in there, that they are on the city's website, and if we can find the specific locations and whatever departments manage those, that would be, I think, great to put in the master plan.
Perfect.
We'd have to make sure, and Cindy, I don't know if you know, Bob's trying to look it up, is it required to have those entire studies in there in the appendix?
I think if we reference them.
That would be okay?
I think if we reference them, yeah.
Okay.
And if, and if we have, I mean, with the executive study, in the beginning of it, we do a really quick summary of all three of those, and then just reference it in the back, but if we just, if we can make it a bit more of an extended summary in the back as well for all the plans, and then just reference, and then just reference the documents, because in the end, I mean, it's, it is ginormous. It's ginormous.
Okay.
Yeah, and the housing study already has an executive summary, it's four pages, which is great.
Yeah, yeah, which is beautiful.
Yes, ma'am.
I have two questions, one for Bob. Bob, I know we went around with the Northeast District with that rezoning. That's not in here. It, well, it, you know, it didn't pass, and so we got to rethink it, or?
It didn't get voted down.
They didn't vote down, they postponed it until after.
Okay.
Well, that's something that you all need to decide what you, I still have it in there as light industrial.
Okay.
If you want that changed, we can do that, but that, I mean, the plan was to always have that as kind of a light industrial corridor.
Okay. The other one is, is that, you know what, I didn't get that big, thick book.
Do you want mine?
I sort of like this one. You know what I'm saying? And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have a big book, but I got an ordinance book that's this big.
Right.
And I don't carry it around with me, and so I've literally pulled out what I think we may need all the time. Commissioner Dallas, Chair Dallas is right. I sit on this committee. I don't want to be fishing through that book either, but however, in order for me to know it, I've got to have a quick synopsis, just like, it's got to be like our Bible, so if we can explain to people. But I do have a problem with, we always try to make stuff convenient, and we talk about, so people can understand. People understand more than what we think, because I, I mean, I got told that several times on the rezoning because of statements that were made, redo the process with the, sending out the notices. There were people in that community outside... There were people in that community outside of the one group that really was having a rough time with that, it's like, we're not illiterate over here, you know, we're just lost, we've been a lost generation, but we survived. And so they were really offensive, so I think we better be careful when we speak, because what we speak is what the people feel like everybody feels, and I don't feel like that because I have family over there, and they're not, they're teachers, they're fire marshals, that don't mean because I'm in that area, I'm illiterate. I think that we need to be careful, not you, sweetie, but we, as the body up here, we need to be real careful, and even council, at how we address this. So Bob, I don't know, but I know that it is supposed to come back up about move forward, whatever, whatever we going to do. And now I have a question for, for Amy, if y'all don't mind.
Does Amy mind?
I mean, attorney, our attorney.
Does the attorney mind?
Our attorney, I'm sorry, attorney. Don't we have to be careful when we do any type of gathering and discuss business? Is that, or is that not breaking the Open Meetings Act when we don't publicize it and do what we want? I mean, I'm not saying, I, I love going in the community talking, I love it, but I guess for protection over council and the city at, at large, do we need to have permission, or do we need to post, like, the open meetings or the town halls?
Notice.
I mean, under the, under the OMA, Open Meetings Act.
For the town halls or other meetings with regard to?
Discussing city business.
The master plan, or are you just talking in general?
Neighborhood associations, I think the neighborhood meeting, I think that's what she was referring to, yeah.
What did you say, Senator?
It was a neighborhood meeting, neighborhood association meeting, so it was kind of like, okay.
No, 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 not neighborhood association, that's entirely different.
Okay.
This was not an association that met with people. I'm saying, community people coming together, and they're having a meeting discussing city business, do we need to publicize it so that we're not in violation of the Open Meetings Act? Or is it okay?
The Open Meetings Act requires a public body, a quorum of which is meeting to deliberate on a topic presented before it, to post it as a public meeting.
Okay, so the answer is no.
It depends on the nature of the meeting.
It?
So if, if there, if there is a quorum of a commission that is, that is meeting outside of a regularly scheduled meeting, but if there is a quorum of that commission who is meeting to deliberate on a topic that is before it, that should be done at a public meeting.
Okay.
If, if it is just a group of a handful of members who are having a coffee chat with citizens, that does not necessarily have to be posted as a public meeting.
Because they're not deliberating commission business.
Okay. I just need to clarify, thank you.
Sorry, now, back to the master plan.
Could I, could I ask one question?
Yes.
We talk about the appendix, I just, in the appendix, in the appendix, we, we have, oh, there's my list, in the appendix, we have the community input documentation, and that should be in there because that's everybody's comments verbatim, so they will see.
The, the, the survey results from the master plan.
The survey results, and so that, so that's, there's a lot of that, so that would be in here, so that would stay, you guys are good with that, okay. So that would stay in there, we would, we would consolidate the housing analysis, the transportation study, and the parking study. The idea of the maps were, so they would be easier to look at, I mean, the, so they would be the, you know, they're those larger, so they would be folding out instead of, yes, so they would be larger, so we would, it's okay if we kept those in there.
Yes.
And then, and then it's just our adoption, documentation would be in the back.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we were also doing a recreational plan, is that a part of it as well?
We did. You submitted it, it's approved, and it's already, it was approved, you guys, it was approved, and it was in DNR, and it's, it's ready to go.
Okay, so will that be a part of the appendix, or will that be?
Page 28.
Twenty-eight, okay.
Yeah.
We, we talk about it, yeah, we, we talk about it, but not the entire document. We, we reference it. Now, if you would need a copy of it, we'll definitely give you a copy of it.
No, I already, I think I already have a copy of it, but I'm just trying to understand, like, all those plans are being completed kind of together.
Right, right.
So I was just trying to make sure that I'm thinking about it in a way that they're either all located in one place, or they're separate, so that's what I was trying to verify.
Perfect, okay, yeah.
And Chair.
Yes?
So a couple of things. In the Planning Enabling Act, it states in there that the planning for the master plan, oh, no, I missed it, lost it. The master plan shall address land use and infrastructure issues and may project 20 years or more into the future, and it, and it needs to include maps, flats, charts, and description, descriptive, explanatory, and other related matter, and shall show the planning commission's recommendations for the physical development of the planning jurisdiction. So a lot of the appendices provide that justification for the decisions that are primarily held in both the land use, future land use, as well as the goals and objectives that are in Chapter Six, of which you all have. So I mean, that's, it's kind of the basis for it. I understand what you're saying, and we certainly can, when we present it to the public, we can present it in, in sections so that they don't have to go through all of that, but I think it's important for those who want to understand where the justification is for these things, where we're getting it from, and so that's, that's part of it. The second thing is, is that when we hired Spicer to begin with, the, the proposal was is that we would, instead of having all of these plans that we've had over the years that just sit on the shelves and do nothing, we had them review and bring into this master planning process so that one year we said we were going to do one thing, and then all of a sudden, the next year, we're moving in a different direction, we wanted to kind of combine everything together, which also would include the city council's strategic planning types of goals. So we want to include all of it together, so that's why it's a much larger document than perhaps what you're used to seeing from some of the municipalities.
And, and I, I get what you're saying, again, but I'm just concerned about not necessarily the unwieldiness of it, but the need to have all of the back planning information in the master plan. That's why I said, for me, a, an executive summary as a part of the appendancy would be sufficient, and I'm not saying that's for everyone, I'm just saying from my perspective, that should be sufficient, so we have a master plan that is manageable for anyone to be able to access and read through it.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I understand what you're saying, you know, I'm thinking about the, the traffic study and the parking study. The details in those studies, sure, could be part of the master plan, but.
Will help us come to the conclusions that we did.
I guess what I'm saying is that, do we need the details in the master plan? We know what the, the summary is and the recommendations are, could that not simply be a part of the master plan, and the actual detailed analysis be placed somewhere else? That's, that's what I'm trying to get a sense of.
And we talked about that in terms of presentation to the public, and how we would potentially put it on the website, in which then you could look at the individual pieces. The initial draft, if you approve that, and the city council approves the draft then, then would go into a link, actually, so that anybody can go in there and click on that link and see what the master plan is.
The, the entire?
And potentially, we could, I guess, divide it out into sections as well, so that they didn't have to wade through everything.
The 105 megabyte file that?
Exactly.
That we had, yeah. I, I, again, again, that's, I guess, my concern, i- is, it's a huge file, there's a lot of information there. And if someone is just simply saying this is the master plan without understanding that there are separate parts that come together to make part of the whole.
Right.
Then they think that, they have to read it from page one through 538.
So, I mean, in essence, what you, most of you received, other than you had the, the main, the large one printed out, that is the essence of the master plan, that's, for the most part, the, the guts of it.
I get that. Okay, so for the public viewing, or for, for the public, um, presentation, will they get the entire master plan with appendices, or just simply the master plan?
Yes, I think we, we should, we can divide it up, though, so that they don't have to go through, or they can choose to go through, because I think that they, it's important, especially with the survey results, that they see what citizens have said.
Oh, I don't have any problem with the survey results, it's, it's the, the housing and the other two studies, the parking and the traffic studies.
Right.
I think, I think it's important that the survey results are part of the master plan.
But see, you know, like, for example, I don't mean to.
Yeah, we're beating, we're beating the dead horse.
Conversation, but.
We're, we're beating the dead horse, yeah.
For, for example, developers will call me, and they will say, well, what does your master plan say? What, what, what kind of goals do you have for the future? And say they're a developer of a housing, they're going to want to see the, the main master plan, but then they're going to want to refer to the housing plan, and they're not going to want to look at the executive summary, they're going to want to look at some of the detail of what, what's being presented. Or the downtown folks looking at parking and parking issues, or transportation as we begin to look at non-motorized routes throughout the city and things of that nature, so those are.
I understand that.
Yeah.
So would they be looking at the master plan for all of that, or would they be able to say, okay, we've got the master plan here, let's look at the details for the housing study over here? That, that's what I'm trying to get a sense of.
Could, could we, could we set up our website? Because most likely, we would have it on, on a website, so that we could set it up so that I could go on my table of contents, and it would be, you know, like a hyperlink, so I could, I could, I could hit on it, I could hit on section one, title, chapter one, and we'd go right to chapter one. But I don't really care about chapter one, I want to all, go all the way back to the land use, I'll hit on chapter, you know what I mean, and so it would go to the back, and then we could also hit on it so we could then pull up the, the, the studies, you know what I'm saying?
Right, I understand that, but my, I guess my question is, or the thought I have in the back of my head, is what about the other studies that have been done over the last 10 years that actually should be part of the master plan, that are not there? I, I don't want to say we're, we're going to skip two or three and then have these other four or five in, in it, you, you understand what I'm saying? I, I know there have been numbers of studies, in fact, one of the number of studies that have been done in terms of that input towards the master plan, do we also pull those pieces into it?
Those are pulled into it. That, that's one of the jobs that we had them do, is to reconcile the other studies and plans that were presented, and many, many of which, there's several of, like, for example, the Down, the Riverfront Development Commission, they had a whole list of projects that they were working on, while half of them have been completed. And so therefore, we, there's no need to include a study that talks about projects that have already been.
I have a question.
Yes?
I don't, I don't have a question, I have an observation, this is at a much, much different level than this conversation, but I'm sensitive to Chair Dallas's point originally, that one of the things we should really be concerned about is how you, how useful this is to the average person. So my comment is simply about, this is minor league stuff, the graphics. I understand the difficulty of putting together a graphic map when you have a legend that has any number of issues. Maps nine and nine B, for example, are so full of stuff that I think is not really useful, but even map four, I've looked at map four for some time, I can't make head nor tail out of what it's trying to show me, and I suspect that's probably going to be true of anybody who picks this document up.
Okay.
And thinks they're going to learn something from the graphics, because people oftentimes, that's where they go first. That's, that's their, that's their school. And I personally, and again, I have no expertise in this at all, but it seems to me that some of the graphics are so detailed or not detailed enough, and, and again, map four is a mystery to me, is what I'm supposed to learn from map four. I know what I'm supposed to learn, because I have a, I have a title, but then trying to figure out the graphics themselves is beyond me, and I suspect probably beyond an awful lot of people who pick the document up.
Okay.
So again, that's not, that's not on the same level as other discussion, but it's a, it's an issue for me.
No, but it's, but, but that's a, that's a, that's a very good observation. So, so in map four, so then what will happen is, and map four is the, the non-motorized transportation study, and it's, it's, it's enlarged, it's, it's still a bit difficult to read because we put everything on it, so we will, we can clean it up and make it just easier to depict, but it just, this, the idea was then in the back, it gets a little bit bigger, so it's 11 by 17, so that would still be part of the document, so you could look at a larger, you know, you could look at a larger plan and, and see how it would reference through it. But that's just 11 by 17, but we'll definitely go in there and try and clean, clean it up a little bit. You said there's other ones that were, some graphic issues?
Well, nine and nine B is, it's got so much information in, I don't know of what utility it has.
Oh, that's just your existing land use map?
Yeah, those are always confusing to look at, because they take individual parcels and say what it's being currently used for.
Now, what we did in the document for proposed land use, we ended up quartering it off, and blowing, you know, and, and focusing in, so it was, we had the whole overall land use map, and then we quartered it off, so we just divided the city up, so it would, it was the overall one, then we had to quarter, you know, so it was easier to see it.
Right, and going back to map four, Williamson wrote it spelled wrong, but that's, I'll get to that. Yes, ma'am, I read this stuff.
We all read it.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a council person who does, we call the government 101. I mean, we could ask her to actually take the sections and do a study, because like when we were talking about the ward, she did a series on the ward, how the process worked. I mean, there's a way we can do this, and everybody can understand, but I don't think we need to limit this stuff based on us assuming that people can't read, and people can't see, and they don't understand. I think that if we, as a body, we presented the right way.
Make sure we present the right way.
If we present this the right way, and everybody's on the same page, I don't think there'd be any confusion, because I like the idea, take a section, and then let me go right to that. I mean, I don't want to be going, have to read the whole book to get it, let me be able to go right to what I want to get to, then if I have questions, I'm sure you could call Mr. Bob or Ms. Cassie, I mean, staff people, and you can give your answers. I'm just saying, for me, we all got to be on the same page, okay, no one ship float without the other. So if we agree to this, we all need to be saying the same thing, not somebody playing solo on me, okay? But we all said the same thing. I appreciate the work that you done, I'm going to be honest. I see this, and I was excited, because I'm like, okay, the big one has got to be on the webpage, but this is a whole lot easier for me to get this and go in and say, okay, so now, let me go to my computer, let me go to City Hall and see if somebody will print off what I want. Our citizens are not that far gone that we can't help them. I mean, we're servants, being a servant means we serve them, they don't serve us. So we need to stay conscious that everybody, we got to meet everybody where they at, you know, I, I just really need to say that one, because we get, we getting caught up on a book that most people, even some people on council, on this committee and other committee, is never going to ever look at, okay? Let's just be honest. And if they do, it's only to find what they want to find. I like this book, I just have one correction, can you please put the F in my name, because there is three bradymores running around this city.
I already, I already took care of that one, I've got that in mind.
I wanted to make one comment, just so you guys know, if this is more, I agree that this is much more attainable, it does list the appendices, maybe we could just mention that they are online, and you can pick them up, so that people will, people probably will automatically understand that they could come here and ask, but maybe they won't.
So, so Staff Golden and Staff Zerman? So, so Staff Golden and Staff Zimmerman, would there be anything else we would need to add as an appendix for this master plan? We, we have the survey results, we have the housing study, we have the traffic and parking studies. Is there anything else that you could think of that we would need to add as another appendice? Another append... Well, Parks and Recreation is a separate plan, yeah.
No, won't it go, I'm sorry, won't Parks and Recreation go in here too, or no?
It potentially could, I mean, it was all part of this.
Yeah, usually stands alone. We talk about parks in here?
No, 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 you're fine, I mean, I just assumed...
I think they wanted to rush it out, because the DNR was coming up with funding or something of that sort.
But we had a deadline.
We had a deadline, that one had to be, had to be like approved by DNR.
So should we actually include that as part of the master plan? The Parks and Recreation report?
We potentially could.
You know...
The, the thing of it is, is that it has a lot of components that are already in here, like the survey results and things of that nature.
And a lot of the maps came directly from that study as well.
The park maps, and, right.
Mm-hmm, trail maps.
Trail maps.
The confusing one for you, Bob, came from that?
Okay, so let's accept.
So do I have the motion to accept this draft of the master plan, as has been presented to us, with the basic document and six, seven... Six, six appendices.
Some more.
Support Jones.
It has been moved in the second. Do we need to take a roll call vote? Are we okay with...
Only if there's a dissent.
If there's a dissent, I'm gonna hit, I mean, I'm saying that on public, sorry. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, nay? Thank you. It's been approved the, to accept the draft of the master plan. Thank you so much for your assistance. Yes ma'am.
So maybe this is for Amy. So with us approving the draft here today, it goes to council, correct? And then you have your 60-day window? It comes back here for approval?
Correct.
For public hearing?
Public hearing, hearing.
Public hearing adoption.
And adoption, right? Does it go to council again?
It goes to council again. So that moves us into, all of that timeline pushes us likely into September. So we will need a motion to extend, because right now, we have it until June 1st, is the deadline.
Well, we were gonna need a motion anyways for that one. I make a motion that we extend. Say it again, can you?
The master plan.
Staff, Staff Zimmerman, say it again. I'm making a motion to extend.
Yes, make a motion to extend the master plan deadline until...
The 1st of October?
1st of October, October.
I make a motion that we extend the master plan until the 1st of October, 2022.
Support.
It's been a motion to extend the master plan approval to October 1, 2022. And second it, all in favor, please state by your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It's been moved to extend our master plan approval process until October 1, 2022.
The only other thing I would like you all to do is if you have comments, corrections to the existing plan, please get those to me as soon as possible, because we would like to get that.
We could get together, if you guys want to get together, whatever is easiest, yeah. Whatever's easiest, if you guys want to get together, we could go over them.
Don't have to worry about it. Dr. Dallas, that made all the corrections.
I didn't, I didn't question that, I figured that as much. Thinking about hiring her, just so you know. But I did want to let the commission know, and I know, that's okay, wait, just one more thing. We will send out the draft, oops, once it's, once it's approved as a draft to go out, it will go out to the surrounding jurisdictions. The, the individual stakeholders that we met with, and we spoke with them, we said, once the draft was ready, we will let them know where the link is. We'll be emailing each one of them. So everybody that we've spoken with, even that larger meeting, everybody that was in attendance, will email them individually and say, this is available for review, and we'll show them the link to get to. We'll have copies of this here, for if anybody can't, you know, can't find, can't find it online. But just wanted to let you know, that's how we were gonna notify everybody. We were gonna actually have them attached, you know, be able to go to where the link is, and let them know there's paper copies if they want.
Right.
And that includes the neighborhood associations.
Right, and all the neighborhood associations, because they all, they all had, we gave all their emails as well. So, so instead of just letting them know it's out there publicly, because it'll be a public announcement and things like that, but we will email it to them, once we get the okay out of, and then the 63 days starts.
Just a quick question, is the, the copy for review, is that gonna be in the clerk's office, or is that gonna be up here?
I guess we could have both.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever, however, wherever you guys want to put it. I think the more you have, you know, the better. I think I can drop that name.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.